Good evening and welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us for this public hearing tonight. And this is for an application submitted by Chris Nichol with the Innovent Group related to the placement of fill and structures in .09 acres of forested wetland. My name is Ryan Blazek. I'm with Eagles Environmental Support Division. I'm just going to be helping to moderate this public hearing tonight. But before we get too far, just have a couple of things that we need to go through. First off is the agenda. This is kind of the agenda for tonight. We're going to go through the introduction, which is what we're doing right now. And the big thing is that this is hearing is kind of going to be in two parts. The first part is going to be an informational session where the applicant has an opportunity to present on the project. Followed by a question and answer session. So you'll be able to ask questions related to the permit, application and project. And then the second part is you can make an official statement for the record on this project tonight, and that'll be kind of the hearing part. So you'll have a chance to make a statement related to this project and application. We'll also talk about the ways to submit an official comment, who to contact was for the questions and where to find other information. In case you haven't done a public hearing or attended a public hearing with us before, all lines are going to be muted during the hearing. You'll be able to hear us, but you won't, we won't be able to hear you until it's time to either ask a question or make a statement. We'll unmute you at that time. And then you could submit your question anytime though, using the Q and A box in the Zoom toolbar. And then also just so you're aware, we are recording this hearing. It'll be on our YouTube channel in a few days afterwards. So you can view it again at that time or in case you miss it. And at this time, I would like to invite our Eagle staff on the line to turn their cameras on and introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Jim Bales with the Jackson District Office. I'm the hearings officer and the environmental quality analyst that is reviewing the wetland impacts associated with this proposal under Part 303.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Myers. I am the Jackson District Supervisor for the Water Resources Division.
I'm Cree Raddix. I'm the district floodplain engineer that will be reviewing for floodplain impacts associated with this project under Part 31.
All right. Thank you all for joining us tonight and for those introductions. We're kind of going to move right into the informational session portion of that. And with that, I believe we have Mike Knowles and Mike, we're going to unmute you so you can have a chance to talk about the project. And Mike, it looks like you're with the Omore Group. Looks like your hand is raised and you are unmuted on our end. So now you can unmute yourself and you can begin when you're ready.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep, yep, we can hear you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Again, my name is Mike Knowles. I'm with the Omore Group and represent the applicant tonight. We're the civil engineers. Many of you are familiar with me. I'd like to kind of give you an update on our process, where we are in the process. Many of you met me or saw me at the public hearing that we had on March 14th of 2022 at the Scioto Township Planning Commission. We went through many aspects of the plan as required by Scioto Township ordinance. This is the second public hearing that we're having for the project and we will have a third public hearing, which will be at the township board. This particular public hearing is slightly different than the first or the last. And it's slightly different in this way. So at the Planning Commission Public Hearing, what you saw was a presentation. There were questions, opportunities for public comment, questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant, some back and forth with some of the commenters. And they took a vote and it was approved. So the site plan was approved and at that time we were vested for our road layout and for our density. So the number of units, the 35 units that we're proposing here, which is within the Scioto Township zoning permitted, it's permitted up to 42 on this particular piece of property. Was permitted and the general layout along with certain conditions that they had on their motion for approval. So that was, that was the first public hearing. This public hearing is a little bit different and it's different because we're, we've moved on to the next step. So beyond the preliminary plan, which was approved. We're now in the final engineering process, which is where we finalize our engineering and acquire our permits. We have several permits to acquire for this project. The Part 303 and Part 31 permits mentioned by the Eagle staff are, are two of the permits. It's actually a joint application. But it's, those are, those are the two permits that are required. And there are also two additional permits required from Eagle from separate departments that aren't, aren't represented here tonight. One is the Act 399 water permit and the other is the Part 41 sanitary wastewater system permit. We also are required to get three additional permits. One from the Washington County Water Resources Commission, which covers stormwater management. Those plans have been submitted, revised, submitted, revised, and we have acquired the final approval letter from Washington County Water Resources for our stormwater management system. All of the systems that we propose are within their ordinances, within their requirements and have been noted as such. We are also required from the same agency to get a soil erosion control permit, which should be following shortly. That is a, as equally important, but less intensive a process when it comes to supporting engineering. There are best management practices which we follow and have submitted and we expect that approval to come shortly. There's also an additional Eagle permit, now that I think of it, that will follow once the Washington County Water Resources Soil Erosion Control is issued. We will also have an NPDES permit through Eagle, which is the state level soil erosion control permit as authorized by the EPA. And then the last one is Washington County Road Commission for our passing lane that we're proposing out on Z Road. So obviously we have our work cut out for us. And the reason that I walked you through that sort of process is to understand what tonight is about and why you may not hear as much about say unit count tonight as you might about impacts to wetlands, impact plaques to floodplains. That's, that's what we're here for this evening. And the other big difference is the panel that you see on the right side of your screen aren't going to vote at the end. There's not an immediate, yes, your permit is issued or no, it's not. It's an information gathering, information sharing process that they'll take any new information, the additional, the information that we've already submitted, the information that you provide and go back and take a look at the laws, regulations and ordinances of the state of Michigan to see whether or not this permit request meets the thresholds for wetlands and for floodplain permits. The last public hearing, of course, will be at Scioto Township and it is more, it is a vote. It is a final vote. And this permit is one of the permits that I listed that are required before Scioto Township will hear us once again. Now, I also want to point out for the folks on, on the line that we have also been working with the homeowners association at Parkwood. So they've been working very hard on your behalf for the last year with us, actually even before that, to try to improve the plan to address some of the neighbors' concerns. And they've really done quite a, quite a fine job on your behalf. They engaged a, an additional wetland consultant, a civil engineer and an attorney to review plans and make comments and have become almost a quasi jurisdictional type of review. We've made several changes at their request over the course of that time that will benefit the Parkwood neighborhood. And I wanted to just quickly bring you up to speed on what some of those are. So the, there is an existing easement that that allows this particular five acre piece of property to discharge both stormwater and sanitary to the system, the existing systems in, in Parkwood. And so early on, we said, okay, we're going to tie into your sanitary system. And they said, you know, Parkwood indicated they would, they would prefer that we didn't. You had some issues with your private pump station. And I know you got a backup generator recently, or at least had one on order. Because power failures did cause some backups in some of the units, I believe on Woodgrove Drive. At any rate, we said, fine. And we designed a different sanitary system that doesn't rely on Parkwood in any way, shape or form at the expense of the developer, several hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements. And then we said, well, we still want to discharge our stormwater. The current stormwater that comes from this site, this undeveloped site goes into the Parkwood Stormwater Management Basin currently today. And the reason for that is because when Parkwood was developed prior to sometime between 1984 and 1990, the owner of the property owned both properties. So he essentially granted himself an easement back at the time for like, this would be like sort of a future phase development. The reason that he did that was because prior to Parkwood's development, there used to be a drainage way, a drainage path from this property, this five acre property directly to the U of M Lake Drain. The U of M Lake Drain is the major tributary that takes a, a very large amount of stormwater from the area. If you look at Washington County Drain Commission's maps, you will see that there are 2,368 acres that drain through Parkwood's backyard. Those areas of drainage go as far west as Z Road, a little bit past Z Road, as far east as Wagner Road, a little bit east of Wagner Road, as far south as Waters Road and north of Liberty Road. So it's, that's, that's a, that's a pretty large area. It's about a two square mile area that I just mentioned from road to road, but it's not all of those areas. It's 2,368 acres of that area, all drains through the backyard of, of Parkwood. So what happened was when Parkwood was developed, you can see on the screen, Woodgrove Drive was built and it, it required about five feet of fill along Woodgrove Drive to bring it up to the proposed grades, which effectively cut off the drainage from this five acre piece of property to the U of M Lake Drain. And so because it cut that off, that's how the wetland was created. If you look at aerial maps from 1984, you will see the drainage channel, if you will. And then after 1990, the aerial maps show Parkwood under construction and that is when the wetland begins to appear on the aerials. So by putting the fill in between the parcel and the U of M Lake Drain caused water to back up on the parcel, which is why we have the wetland that we have there today. So what they did though is because they couldn't block the drainage, they created a stormwater system with an end section right at the very northeast corner. That's the top right corner on your screen. There's an end section there that receives all of the stormwater from the undeveloped parcel currently. It takes the water and it routes it into Parkwood's Stormwater Detention Basin, where it stores it, treats it and discharges it into the U of M Lake Drain, along with all of the water, stormwater from, from Parkwood's property. So that required an easement and an easement was in fact issued and recorded for those, for those items. That's why there was an easement. Okay. Because of the, because of the drainage. So in the interim, we said, well, we'd still like to use that easement and Parkwood HOA hired several different professionals to assess our plans. And there were some things that they made recommendations about changes that they would like to see from our plan. And we've implemented many of them, most of them, I would say. So one of the items was that they didn't like, obviously the sanitary, so that we discussed. The second one was the, the pervious pavement. They weren't big fans of pervious pavement for infiltration because it's tough to maintain over time and they were afraid it would get plugged up and our system would be insufficient and wouldn't infiltrate as, as hoped. So we eliminated the pervious pavement and increased bio swales, as you can see on the plan. They really circle the entire property, these, these bio swales, these little mini basins, if you will, that allow opportunities for the water to infiltrate. And then underneath the, where it says 60, 66 foot wide private right of way on the plan there, there is now a structural infiltration basin as part of our stormwater management system. It was added at the request of, of Parkwood because they felt that that would be a, a better way to store water. The outlet for that does go along the eastern property line and through a concrete pilot channel at the request of Parkwood. So that our discharge water doesn't go to the subject wetland. It goes directly into a concrete pilot channel, which then goes to that same northeast or upper right corner of the property. But rather than going into the existing end section that was built at the time to accept the stormwater system, Parkwood requested that we bypass their basin and discharge directly into the, to the U of M Lake Drain. So we, we built a pipe or on paper, of course, on the plan, designed a pipe that would go from that location to the edge of the wetland along the U of M Lake Drain in the upland area, but, but not impacting the wetland, but definitely in the floodplain. More than 50% of Parkwood's property is within the floodplain. It was built in the floodplain. The floodplain maps haven't been amended. So you'll see several of the units in the floodplain. When you, when you take a look at those maps. So that work, that pipe that we would be building is being built in the floodplain because Parkwood is in the floodplain. So anyways, so we, we added all of those components. Not only that, there are maintenance agreements. There's 170 trees that we agreed to plant on Parkwood's property. Several other items along the way. So when I say that your HOA and your consultants have been negotiating hard on your behalf, that's what I mean by that. So I'm happy to report and I, I'm sure that your legal representation for the HOA, Ms. Serini is probably on the line and will probably speak and can speak for herself as to where we are with the easement. I believe we are very, very, very close. I think we're, we were down to just a couple of final words and I believe our engineer and your engineer, Parkwood's engineer and, and Arbor Grove engineer worked those final language out today. And so I think we were, are going to be very close to execution documents for all of the, the multiple documents, the landscape easement, the stormwater easement, the maintenance agreement, all of that. So that was one of the main objectors that requested a public hearing. They were honest with us and said, listen, we want to preserve our rights under the right to object. And we want to make sure that Eagle is aware that, you know, this easement, this revised easement, we have an existing easement, but of course this revised easement is not quite done. And it would, would like to make it a condition of the approval of our permit, which as the Eagle staff already knows, that already is part of the comments that Eagle has provided on our, on our application, that the easement would be required. Obviously it needs to be required because you can't build a pipe across somebody else's property without the proper authorizations. I'm almost done with my opening comments. Excuse me for going long. I hope this isn't too much.
Yeah, Mike, yeah, just if you could wrap it up in another minute or two, we have to move on to the hearing portion at around 6:30. I want to leave a little time for Q and A. Just let you know where we're at.
Beautiful, beautiful. Okay. So at any rate, I will wrap it up and just say that, you know, this is, this is one more step along the process. It's specifically for, for floodplain and for wetlands issues. You know, there were prior opportunities and future opportunities for other issues. That's sort of where we are in the process. We've been working in good faith with your representatives at the HOA. But of course, each individual property owner in Parkwood does have the right, this is America and has the right to make public comment. And certainly the state of Michigan will take those comments into consideration when they review them in light of their permit regulations. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that presentation introduction, Mike. At this time, we're going to go into the question and answer session. Just a couple of things about this. So if you have a question, you can either type it in the Q and A box, the question and answer box that you should see at the bottom of your screen. Or you can click your hand or click the hand icon at the bottom of the screen. If you want to raise your hand and zoom and verbally ask your question. I think we have at least one phoning caller. If you're listening on the phone, you can select pound two. And what that will do, raise your hand in Zoom and then they'll give us an opportunity to call on you. So I'll either go kind of going between the Q and A box and raised hands. And so if your hand is raised, I'll call you, we'll unmute you. You can unmute yourself and then you can ask your question. You know, of the, of our panelists here. Those can be questions related to the application or Eagles application process. I should also mention that if you have a comment, hold on to that and save that for the public hearing portion. That's where you can make your statement. That's where we'll go after this, after we get through the questions that we have and we'll hope to move on to that portion at about 6:30. So this is the Q and A session. The portion for comments is, is coming up next. So if you have a question, now is the time. We won't be answering any questions during the hearing portion where you're giving statements. Let's see here. See if there's a question. It looks like I have a statement without a question in the Q and A box. If you, I should also mention that if you want to give a written statement, I'll give you, before we go to the hearing part, other ways that you can make a comment. So if you'd like to make written comments, you can do that by mail or through a Myrenviro system. All right. So I have a question here. Did the developer provide any alternate design without filling in the wetlands? So I'm going to direct these at you, Jim, and then feel free to, to direct them now to Mike or, or anyone else on the panel that you feel is appropriate.
There were, there was not a submitted, I guess, design that didn't include filling in the .09 acres of wetland through our process where we asked them to consider alternatives. We refer to as our alternatives analysis. You know, we, we worked through some back and forth conversation with them about how their, I guess, avoiding minimizing impacts to the wetland. And so through that conversation, they explain, you know, things that they incorporated into the design to minimize those impacts. But there was not, I guess, specifically a proposal that did not include wetland fill.
All right. Thanks for the answer, Jim, and thanks for asking that question. What is the acreage of wetland disturbance that would result from the proposed project? And I think that was in the application, right? Or is there anything else to add on that what the acreage was specifically?
Yeah, there's, there's nothing to add. It's a point, .09 is what is being considered.
Okay, .09 acres. Yeah, that's right. All right. Thank you, Jim. Are there any other questions? Let's see, at this point. And while we're giving you a second there, again, just so you're aware, after this question and answer portion, we'll move on to the hearing portion where people can make a statement and everybody will have an opportunity to make a statement on this application. And I'm still not seeing another question in here. Or any hands raised. Before we move on, if we do have someone on the phone, I just want to reiterate again, you can select pound two. If you want to raise your hand in Zoom and ask a question and you will be able to do the same thing to make a statement when we go through that here in a little bit. But I'm still not seeing any questions. So we're going to move on to the next portion. But before we do that, as mentioned, I'm going to talk about the other ways to submit an official comment for the record in case you didn't want to make a statement tonight. Verbally, you can do that through Eagles Myrenviro system by accessing the public hearing event under submission, pound HPE dash WXBE dash PARV8. And you'll see the link there. We're going to put that in the chat. And then also you can submit it by mail to Jim Bales, B A L E S, at the Jackson District Office at 301 East Lewis Glick Highway. And that's in Jackson, Michigan, 49201. And I'm basically spelling this out primarily for those who are on the phone. And the comment period after this public hearing will be open for 10 days, which is January 29th, 2023. All right. So with that. All right. We're going to move on to the hearing portion. So Jim, I'd like to invite you to read the opening statement to kick this off.
There is a, there's quite a bit for me to, to read through. So, so bear with me. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jim Bales and I am the District Representative in the Water Resources Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. I'll be serving as the hearing officer for this public hearing on Eagle submission number HPE WXBE PARV8. With me tonight is Tiffany Myers, our Water Resources Division District Supervisor and we Raddix, our Eagle Floodplain Engineer. To describe how this is going to work tonight, I will begin with some background information about why we are here. I will then describe the purpose of the hearing and how your comments will be used. Following that, I will outline the procedures under which we will take your comments and then describe what will happen after tonight's hearing. It will then be time for you to provide comments. And we will spend the majority of time tonight listening to those comments. At the end of the hearing, I will read the closing statement. By way of background information, the Water Resources Division is responsible for administering a variety of programs that help protect inland lakes and streams, wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes and the Great Lakes. These programs regulate certain activities such as dredging or filling a lake, stream or wetland, constructing a dam, constructing a marina, placing shore protect, excuse me, placing shore protection or constructing docks and building in a designated critical sand dune area, wetland or floodplain. The law governing those responsibilities is the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act 1994 PA 451 as amended. We are here tonight because Chris Nichol, the Innovent Group, has proposed to place 615 cubic yards of fill and structures in .09 acres of forested wetland for the construction of a new multifamily residential development and associated infrastructure. In order for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activities described in the public notice meet certain criteria set by Part 31 Water Resource Protection and Part 303 Wetlands Protection of Act 451. In general, we must consider the effect of the proposed project on the floodplain and wetlands. When reviewing an application for permit under the provisions of Part 303 Wetlands Protection of Act 451, Eagle is charged to make the following indications as required by Section 30311 of Part 303. A permit for an activity listed in Section 30304 shall not be approved unless the department determines that the issuance of a permit is in the public interest, that the permit is necessary to realize the benefits derived from the activity and that the activity is otherwise lawful. A permit shall not be issued unless it is shown that, that an unacceptable disruption will not result to the aquatic resources. And a permit shall not be issued unless the applicant also shows either the following, that the proposed act- that the proposed activity is primarily dependent upon being located in wetland without a feasible and prudent alternative does not exist. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in Chris Nickel and the Invent Group's proposal an opportunity to provide information that Eagle can use in making the decision whether or not to issue a permit. Please recognize that Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria that Eagle must use in making a decision. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the project. We will be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that Eagle is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether or not there's wide, excuse me, widespread support or opposition to the project. In just a moment, I will outline the procedures we will use for taking your comments. But before I do so, I need to mention that the notice of this hearing was published in the January seventh edition of the Ann Arbor News and on the Eagle website calendar. As we discussed at the beginning of the informational session, if you have a comment to provide, raise your hand in the Zoom toolbar. To ensure that the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we will follow these steps. First, the applicant has already had an opportunity to describe the proposed project. Second, we will then call on those who, excuse me, those who have indicated in their registration that they would like to speak. After that, we will call on all those that raise their hand in their Zoom toolbar that they would like to make a comment if they haven't already been called upon. As a reminder, if you are participating in this hearing via telephone only, follow the directions of the moderator on how to identify that you would like to make a comment. You may also submit your comments to Eagle via the My Enviro portal, email or U S mail. When all the comments have been completed, we will ask if anyone else would like to make a statement. When your name is called, your microphone will be unmuted. As you begin your comments, please state your name and any group or association you may represent. Each person will be given four minutes to make their comments. We will indicate to you when you have a minute left. Please begin wrapping up your comments and end within the allotted time. If need be, we will indicate that your time has ended. I ask that we all be courteous and respectful to one another tonight. Please also recognize that Eagle staff is here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the proposed project and to listen to those comments. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be a part of the information Eagle will consider in making its decision on whether or not to issue a permit on the proposed project. The public comment period for this public hearing is open for 10 days from the date of this hearing, ending on January twenty ninth, twenty twenty three. Additional information and comments submitted in writing during the 10 day public comment period will also be considered in Eagle's decision. Following the close of the public comment period, Eagle will make a decision to either issue a permit for the project as proposed or with modifications or send a letter of denial. You may find out what the decision is by checking the Eagle My Enviro Portal website and searching for the application number H P E W X B E P A R V eight. Thank you for your attention. We will begin calling the names of those who have indicated that they would like to make a statement.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. Before we do that, one thing I just wanted to mention, we did have a few questions that came in after we already ended the Q and A session to those people who asked the question. I just want to let you know, I will, I will send those to the our panelists and I will provide Jim's information for any follow up questions. But right now we are moving on with taking comments. As Jim mentioned, you had an opportunity during registration to indicate if you wanted to make a comment. So we're gonna start with the people during registration who indicated that and we're gonna call your name off. And then we'll unmute you on our end. You'll unmute yourself. And then you can make your comment and you'll have four minutes. I'll give you about one minute heads up to let you know when you're getting close to your time and then when your time is up as well. Please identify your your name and if you have any affiliation, you may mention that too. So I'll mention the name, who's up up next, just so you're aware. And once we get through all those on names, then we will go to people who have their hands raised. And again, if you're on the phone, you can select pound two to raise your hand. Or if you're not on this list and didn't indicate you want to make a comment, but did want to make a comment, you just need to select that raise hand icon in Zoom. Everyone will have an opportunity to make a comment tonight. So with that, we're gonna start with the first person on our list. And that's Robert Heisey. Robert, we're gonna unmute you on our end. It looks like you're unmuted. You can, yep, you can begin.
Heisey five two five Parkrow. Thank you for taking the time. I am far from a expert in this area. You guys are not me. I moved into Park, to Wood Grove in the summer. It was all I knew. I had woods in my backyard. And then, of course, in the spring, everything gets flooded and and there you have it. And you know, and I was interested to hear the speaker representing Arbor's Grove that somehow this this wet, this wetland in question was created as a function of the park row, which I guess the standards have changed. It's thirty years later, things have moved on. Somehow implied in that was, you know, well, it's, you know, sort of it's Parkwood fall. We created this wetland and now it's a risk. I mean, to me, you know, two wrongs don't make a right. I mean, I, to me, you know, with these trees coming up with the with the water as we see it. At some point, I think in our county preservation of wetlands needs to be more fully rendered. Again, I'm no expert in this area. I'm a physician. I, you know, I'm certainly out of my depth. But I, but I do know that the number of trees that suck up fifty gallons a day of water are coming up and the wetland is over there in that corner of the property. And, you know, it's wet here. I admit it, you know, I had no idea, but but there you have it. We gotta deal with it. And I just asked that you all carefully consider sort of the overall ecological aspects of what's going on in our county, particularly with regard to this project. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment, Robert. All right. And so next up is Brooks Williamson and then followed following Brooks, we have Sandra Sorini Elser. So Brooks, we're going to unmute you. It looks like you're unmuted on our end. Feel free to unmute yourself and begin when you're ready.
Oh, good evening. Brooks Williamson, a favor if I may, could we have Sandra go first? She represents the Parkwood Association. And I fall in, I was retained by the association. I think she would provide the lead into my involvement.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine with that. So Sandra, we were gonna unmute you and you can start with your comment.
Oh, thank you very much. You can hear me, right?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Okay, so I'm Sandra Serini Elser, and as Brooke said, I'm an attorney representing the Parkwood Condominium Association Board of Directors. And I'm gonna keep my comments short. Brooks Williamson and George Jerome, who've been retained by the Parkwood Board are gonna make a couple of comments as well. So just to let you know, this evening, Mark Stevens, the president of the Parkwood Board is here. Bob Zinser, Parkwood Board of Director. Again, Brooks Williamson, our wetland consultant retained by Parkwood. George Jerome, the engineering consultant retained by Parkwood, the Parkwood Board. And as I mentioned, Jerome, George Jerome and Brooks Williamson will make separate statements about the wetland permit. I just want to note that just so there's no confusion, the the Invent Development before Eagle tonight is also referred to as the Arberries Project. And I'll call it the Arberries Project in my short statement here. The Parkwood Board of Directors requested this public hearing because the Arbury Stormwater System will require a stormwater easement from Parkwood through Parkwood to allow the Arbury Stormwater to flow into the U of M Lake drain. It'll go through a floodplain. And we believe that floodplain is regulated by Eagle. So we thought it was important for us to have this public hearing so we can get Eagle understanding the easement is necessary. So representatives of the Parkwood Board have been in conversation with Arby since last March, at least, just as Mike Knowles mentioned, to ensure that the design of the Arby Stormwater System first would not cause flooding of the Parkwood parcel and second would not adversely affect the large wooded wetland located in the northeast corner of the Arby's parcel. And this was easily visible on the drawing that Mike, Mike Knowles put up. It's that large, I think it's half an acre of of wooded wetland that we wanted to preserve so that there would be plenty of trees and a nice wetland preserved for, to help with the flooding and and also visibility. So I'm pleased to report that due to our negotiations over the last year, Arby's has revised its development plans. They have eliminated the sheet drainage that could have damaged the wooded wetland. And this was a suggestion of both Brooks Williamson and George Jerome. And they have contained the stormwater flowing into Parkwood in an eighteen inch pipe and directed into the floodplain through the floodplain into the U of M Lake drain. The pipe ends before the floodplain, of course, but it's all directed into the U of M Lake drain. So the Parkwood Board and its consultants are pretty comfortable with the new design. But we would request that any Eagle permit issued be conditioned on execution and recording of a stormwater easement in a form acceptable to the Parkwood Board of Directors.
And one minute left, Sandra.
Okay, and we are, and we are close on the stormwater easement, but as Mike said, not quite done. So we would ask that be a condition of issuance of any permit. So thank you for your consideration.
Thanks for your comments, Sandra. All right, Brooks, you're up. And then let's see, followed by Brooks, I've got Kevin Jackson, who's gonna be up next. You can begin when you're ready.
Okay. Are we on deck?
Yep, you can begin.
Brooks Williamson back again. Quick background. Running environmental consulting company for thirty five years. Prior to that, I was employed by the predecessor of Eagle, doing exactly what you're doing. Hearings in the wetland work and prior to that with the Corps of Engineers in Detroit. I was retained, brought into this project to look at potential wetland impacts and what was involved with the project. With George Jerome, we did in fact, look at this carefully. We worked with Mike Knowles and the rest of his group. And as Sandra just said, we had concerns over the length of time stormwater would be stored in the wetland, the wooded wetland in northeast corner of the property and the potential loss of that wetland due to flooding would change the habitat and Parkwood residents were against that and wanted to have that area preserved. So over a period of time, which turns out to be a year plus, Parkwood Board along with Inavant and Mike Knowles were able to come up to with a, what we believe is a solution to the problem that the department will likely consider far better than the original, which was flooding the wetland. So with that, I will end my comments and I do appreciate the time. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comments, Brooks. All right. So Kevin Jackson is up and then followed by Kevin is Gillian Carey. So we'll find, find Kevin.
Good evening.
Oh, yep, you can begin whenever you're ready, Kevin.
All right. My name's Kevin Jackson, a resident of the Parkwood Condominium Association. And I would like to know that while considering all these alternatives for managing the stormwater runoff, has anybody seen the actual water on the property and what it does? Has any of you guys seen that? Will that be under consideration? Because as we're talking, I I noticed that, you know, there's maps and you can imagine how you can interpret a map, but what I'm getting at is I had video of water actually on the property moving and what it does, where it floods and where it goes. How can I submit that to you guys for considering the permits for this densely populated project?
Well, I will be providing Jim's contact information. So I would suggest following up with Jim.
Send it, send it to Mr. Bales.
Yeah, is that correct, Jim? Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll do that. That would be the end of my comments. Thank you.
Yep, thanks for your comment. All right. So next up is Gillian Carey and then after Gillian is Alan Burbano. So Gillian, it looks like you're unmuted on our end. Feel free to unmute yourself and begin when you're ready.
Yes, good evening. Gillian Carey, Scioto Township trustee. I have sat in at a lot of the, well, the, the planning commission meetings and I've read a lot of information regarding this. And I do live in the area. I live less than a mile away. I've had to deal with my own flooding issues in my neighborhood that took me three years through the Wasnot County Drain Commission. So I am very familiar with the process. I'm familiar with what happens when developers and and individuals build without considering the general area. So with that being said, Arbor's Grove has, from what I remember, they will be removing four hundred and seventy two trees. There's already wetlands there and those trees really do a lot to mitigate the flooding. And we already know that along some of the, I think it's the Wood Grove, no, I'm sorry, the Parkwood condos there, they have problems with basement, wet basements, industrial sump pumps and whatnot. So the removal of these trees is a huge issue. Each tree can absorb, I don't know how many gallons, and then it just, it transpires into the environment. Well, removing those trees and then including thirty five units on slabs, there's nothing to absorb that, that water. You have asphalt, you have your roof, you have, you know, the rain coming down. And then we also have this really wet area, even across the street, across the road, you could see it's all flooded over there constantly. So with that said, yes, I understand about this underground detention area, which will end up, if there's easements and everything, you know, unfolds, it will go into the U of M drain. That drain, as I think Mike Knowles had said, is a very large drain. It does go along Park Road, down, down Park Road, and I know for a fact, because I live in this area, when we have big flooding and if the, if the Wasnot County Road Commission does not clear out the ditches, it ends up flooding the roads. It's flooded yards and whatnot. So this is where I am very concerned about and I, I, as a trustee, it is my duty to make sure that the safety, welfare and health of our community, not just in the immediate environment, but extended out. I am very concerned about the residents in that area in Parkwood and also anybody that lives in that area, they really needed to be informed. I don't know how many people have been informed about this hearing, but this is something that that area, all residents should have been informed about.
Yeah, about one minute, Gillian.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So this is the wetland, filling in the wetlands and then, you know, thirty five units on top of that with asphalt, removing all those trees. It's in an eighteen inch underground pipe. I don't think that's going to take care of the issues. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate you having this for residents.
Yeah, thanks for your comments. All right. So next up is Alan Burbano, followed by Bill Doty. So Alan, we're gonna unmute you. You can begin when you're ready.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep, sounds good.
Good evening, Alan Burbano of Parkwood Condominiums. I would first like to thank Eagle for granting this public hearing at the request of Parkwood residents. Our November petition signature campaign secured forty two signatures, which represented a Parkwood residence majority of sixty three percent. Parkwood is no stranger to water as our low lying community has struggled with all manner of floodplain issues over our thirty plus years. We all have sump pumps. Some of us have two sump pumps. One resident has an industrial sump that runs twenty four hours a day. As you might expect, we are concerned about this adjacent proposed development. As you might expect, we are concerned about this adjacent proposed development. That would have an average elevation of seven feet greater than Parkwood. That's mega filter. Retained by a seven foot block wall that would surround the northeast corner wetland. That said, I am going to speak for someone I don't know. And will likely never meet. Who among us would like to purchase a five hundred thousand dollar unit atop point zero nine acres? This developer proposes to fill in. There are no less than twelve units that touch the buffer limits of this. Of this proposed fill in area. With no planned disclosure afforded those buyers. I am merely an observer here. But it feels like a kind of a dirty little secret we are all keeping from that uninformed. Unsuspecting future buyer. I thank you for your time.
Thanks for your comment, Alan. Right, so next up is Bill Doty. And then I actually. Oh, again, you can go ahead, Bill.
Thank you. Thanks for doing this hearing. Really appreciate that. I am Bill Doty, four sixty five Wood Grove. I'm in the Parkwood condos. Association. The U of M Lake. Comes to my back door. I'm within the FEMA flood zone, just a corner of my property. And. I'm seeing the highest water in the last, I've been here for twenty five years and the last two years I've seen more water in my backyard than I ever have. So it seems like it's coming in at me. Like, I think he receives, I know you received our petition. From the sixty three percent of our residents. And I assume we don't have to go through that tonight, that that's in the record and you'll take care of that. You'll go look at that on your own time. I want to share with you my greatest concerns with your approving. This request. While the wetland areas to be filled in are small. That's the point oh nine acres. They work in concert with the larger wetland. Where stormwater can be absorbed and not run off to the. FEMA floodplain or U of M lake drain as we call it. Your denial. Preserves the species that were identified by. MNFI and Mr. Sanders from the MSU extension. That may be present in those wetlands and of course you have. Ms. Knox already found in her field study. Spotted a blue spotted salamander in the area, which is worth preserving. If your denial of this request reduces the number of units to be built. Then that will be fine because we'll have less stormwater going to the floodplain. Which I think would benefit all of us. Another point I'm concerned about snow removal pollution. Snow will be piled indiscriminately, will be piled up indiscriminately at the north and the east dead ends of the picture that you saw earlier. And on the north side, it'll mostly melt into the bioswale and and into maybe run over into Park. Grove's land and will be filtered by the grass most likely. But at the north end, the north end. Just ends and there's a slope going down to the wetland. And there is no chance there for it to be filtered in any way. And when it goes into that. Wetland, it has a chance to pollute it. I see this as a risk or violation. That needs to be mitigated before any approval of this. Permit.
About one minute left, Bill.
I'm done. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you for your comment. All right, and I have the last person that I have on my list is actually Michael Knowles. I'm assuming maybe Michael that you put your name on there to make a comment for. The presentation portion, but it would be great if you could. Unmute, well, unmute you just to confirm that's the case, or if you did want to make a comment. So it looks like you're unmuted. Did you need to make a kind of comment, Michael, or?
Thank you. No, I don't need to make any follow up comments. Thank you.
Yep, just wanted to confirm. All right, and then so we're going to go to raised hands. So if you have not, it's gonna be one, one comment per person. If you've not made a comment yet and you would like to. Could please raise your hand and zoom. You can do that by selecting the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in by phone, you can make your comment as well. You just need to select pound two. To raise your hand and zoom on your phone receiver and then we will call on you and you'll be able to unmute yourself. To make your comment. So with that, I'm going to start off at the top. It looks like we have George Jerome Junior. George, we're gonna unmute you. And then you'd be able to make your unmute yourself and you'd be able to make your comment.
Yes, hello, everybody. I'm George Jerome Junior from George Jerome and Company. We're civil engineers and surveyors. We were hired by Parkwood to review the plans, the engineering plans. You know, once we did and with Brooks Williamson, I guess I want to reiterate what Sandra and Brooks said and just echo everything that they said. But Brooks and I reviewed the plans as long as ourselves. And there were some items that we weren't comfortable with, specifically the sheet drainage through the wetland. In the northeast corner of Arbor's property. So, you know, with some back and forth with the Arbor's folks, we did come up with, or they came up with a design. Including the underground detention and open channel. Going to an eighteen inch pipe, but then ends up going out to the U of M lake drain. And and with that design, I mean, we do feel that that it, you know, will not adversely affect or impact the wetland. Nor the Parkwood property. So I mean, with that, that's pretty much what I have to say.
Yeah, thanks for the comment, George. All right, next up is Kathleen Brandt. Kathleen, we're gonna unmute you on our end. You can unmute yourself and start when you're ready.
Hello, my name is Kathleen Brandt. I'm a Scioto resident. I represent a group of one over one hundred people in Scioto Township. The group name is Scioto Fiscally Concerned Residents. I'm speaking tonight because I'm concerned about liabilities in Scioto Township. Our mission is to monitor how Scioto spends money, how Scioto wastes money. So the impact, the my impact input is related to. That I have heard that sixty three percent of the Parkwood residents oppose. This plan. And it seems to me that their board of directors is not paying attention to the majority. Of their residents. I would also surmise that the Scioto Township planner. Is not engaging the majority of the residents and that person is only engaging the Parkwood. Condominium Associated Board of Directors. This creates liability, potential liability to Scioto Township. If the majority residents. Chose to take action for this misrepresentation, that directly impacts. Scioto Township's finances. I want Eagle to be aware of that. Also, you mentioned that one of the. Characteristics that you evaluate is a feasible alternative, alternative, does a feasible alternative exist? I personally have sat through most of these hearings through the entire process, through the planning commission. Through Scioto Township's Board of Trustees and I can attest to the fact that. An feasible alternative has never been presented. By this developer and of course, a feasible alternative exists. There is always a feasible alternative. And I believe that would be less density with the majority of the residents are calling for. To mitigate the damage to the wetland. So. We are concerned in Scioto Township about this project. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comment, Kathleen. All right, is there anybody else who would like to make a comment? If you're on the phone, again, you can slide pound two to raise your hand and zoom. We'll call on you. If you're not on the phone, you can. You know, select the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. And again, it's going to give everybody an opportunity to make a comment. Looks like we have a couple more that came in. Paula Gloversen, Paula, we're gonna unmute you. And then you can unmute yourself and you can begin when you're ready.
Yeah, I'm unmuted. You know, I've I've saw this on the planning commission. I disagreed with it then. I don't live in Parkwood condominiums. I live nearby. And I think the concern is we've had a lot of destruction of wetlands. In Scioto Township. And the density issue. That the residents have brought up. But. That area. Has. Frequently come up on the road when we have heavy rains and. Actually, I've saved turtles out of off of Zeeb. Put them back in there. Then I and I've just. Think that. The planning commission made some errors in judgment with. Agreeing to cut down all the trees and then flooding neighbors. But that area is a sensitive area. With the hydrology there. And I I do have concerns about the direction that. Eagle may take and. I understand that the people own the property, want to build something there, but. Looking at the plans myself, I don't I don't think that it's a good idea. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming, Paula. All right, next up is Jonathan Greenberg. Jonathan, you're unmuted on our end. You can begin when you're ready.
Thank you. I wanted to answer a question that was asked earlier. It's about thirty three thousand six hundred gallons a day. Of water. That won't be going into the trees that are being removed. Please consider that in addition to the normal flow that is currently taking place. Removing all these trees. Has an impact greater than what's being considered in this plan. Please account for that extra thirty four thousand gallons. And thank you for allowing me to make comment.
Yeah, thanks for your comment, Jonathan. All right, next up is Helen New. We're gonna unmute you on our end and you can feel free to unmute yourself and begin when you're ready.
Yes, I'm Helene New. I live at the dead end of Woodgrove, the southeast corner. And we already get lots of flooding. The lawn in both the front and the back are sopping. Are are mushy when it rains and full of water. As others have said, I'm very concerned about the removal of all the trees. Already when Trillium was built, we lost a lot of trees and flooding has increased since then. And I'm very concerned too. I noticed that the. I think they're called swales that were to catch the proposed area of catching the water in the development. Does not extend over to the southeast corner. And in back of the last building at the very end. It's completely wet all around the side and to the back. And I'm afraid that it will get only worse, even with what's proposed. I don't think it's sufficient and the removal of trees, I think, is going to cause it to be worse. Thank you for hearing me.
Yeah, thanks for your comment. All right, Catherine Han, it looks like you're up next. We'll unmute you. And it looks like you're unmuted on our end.
How can you hear me? Is that?
Yep.
Okay, I live at fifty three eighty three Park Grove, which backs up right to the the larger corner of the larger wetland, which is the corner of where Woodgrove and Park Grove meet. It has been drizzling for the past little days and the entire ground here, for people to understand the kind of water that gets here. Is like a sponge. You step on it and immediately the water overflows and and there is no absorbing and that's with the trees that are still here. I really liked something that Gillian mentioned earlier here, talking about the larger area of Scioto Township and understanding the development that's happening. Because it's not just the development in this small area that's going to impact us. But you also have to think about that large development that's happening all over off of Saginaw Forest and the impact that that has had by losing all of those trees. And the runoff that flows from there into the floodplain down to Michigan behind Park or behind the Polo Fields and then comes in and it meets up. And sort of they they come together in this that weird drain field, which is the Michigan drain there. All of that water and the loss of trees there is bringing water from that end. And then you have water that would be coming. From the seven feet above where we already have water that doesn't have anywhere to go. I mean, it it I have ducks that are like that will be swimming and playing in the back wetlands back there and it's. I've never seen anything like that. It. It doesn't make sense to suddenly come along and remove all of these trees, then put something that already is at too high of a density. Because we've already losing all of this natural environment in the area. So you have the overflow within the community, but then into the greater areas. Then it continues into for for the natural aspect of animals. Like, nobody's talking. We're talking about the trees, but also about the natural species. No one's been talking about how. Where do the animals go? They all keep coming and looking for a place for them, like the turtles, the amount of turtles that I've seen trying to find a place to lay eggs that is safe. Is is risen in the last two years because they continually keep seeing development happening inside our township on such a large scale. Because the township makes so much money off of it. And it just feels like the alternative has not been presented to us. We understand and I think everybody understands that someone owns a property and should be able to make money off of that, but. There's a larger thing issue here in terms of our environment, both the way that we live amongst. Trees and also the way we live amongst animals. And and I don't think that anyone is really given the majority of us that live in the community. Are saying that. I mean, that's part of what we're so frustrated about because we don't feel like. They get that that what they, you know, that 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 things are going to come out the way that they're trying to make it worded. Like, I feel like. Sometimes our board of directors are they're trying to represent us and I appreciate everything that everyone's doing. But I I feel like something's being missed here and there's a lot of frustration amongst some of the community members as a result of that. And I just appreciate you guys having this hearing so you can think about and care about the environment because the loss of trees to me, I think, is going to be catastrophic. For the entire environment around here.
And thanks for your comment. All right, is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment? That's my last hand raised at this point. We'll give it another couple, couple seconds to see if there's anybody. Else who hasn't spoken yet who would like to make a comment. If you're on the phone, again. Pound two to raise your hand or just select the raise hand icon. And zoom that you see at the bottom of your screen. And then while we're waiting. Just so you know, what we have left tonight, we're going to go through again the other ways to make a comment in case you didn't want to make a comment tonight. We're going to provide some additional contact information for questions. In case you have additional questions that you'd like to talk with Eagle about. And then that will wrap up the evening. So I'm still not seeing any raised hands. So we are going to move on to the next portion of the hearing and that is for Jim to read. The closing statement. So Jim, it'd be great if you could read the closing statement for the hearing tonight.
Thank you for your comments and cooperation. We appreciate your interest in the proposed project. And that you took the time to be here tonight. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing. You may submit additional written comments until January twenty ninth. Following the close of the public comment period, we will consider all comments received and make a decision on the proposed project. Just remind those that may still want to submit a comment. Comments can be submitted via the My Enviro portal. By email or the US mail. The hearing is now closed. Thank you again.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for reading that, Jim. As you mentioned, I've got the other ways to submit a comment up on the screen through, and I'll just repeat those. A little more specifics for those on the phone. I can do that. Through my Enviro under submission H P E W X B E. P A R V eight and we're going to put the link in the chat. Or by mail, you can submit your comments to Jim Bales, B A L E S at the Jackson District Office. Three zero one East Lewis Glick Highway and that's. E A S T L O U I S G L I C K highway and that's in Jackson, Michigan, four nine two zero one. As Jim mentioned, the comment period after the public hearing will be open for ten days, which is January twenty ninth. All right, if if you have additional questions, for questions came in after the Q and A period, you can contact Jim Bales. Environmental Quality Analyst, either by phone or email. His phone number is five one seven. Two five seven four five three two. Or by email at B A L E S J at. uh, or by email at B A L E S J at Michigan dot gov, and that's M I C H I G A N dot gov. Um, so five one seven two five seven four five three two, or Bales J at Michigan dot gov. Alright, and before we wrap that up, I'm wondering, Tiffany, did you have any final comments for us?
I'm gonna get myself unmuted. Um, on behalf of Eagle, I would just like to thank everyone for attending this evening. Gathering public comments is a very important part of our permitting process, so we appreciate you taking the time to, to reach out to us. Uh, we will consider the comments and additional information that you provided while making our decision on this application. So thank you again for your attendance and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Yeah, thanks Tiffany. Thanks for those closing remarks. Thanks to our panel, everybody that chimed in, um, and attended tonight. The last, very last thing I have is just a reminder that we will be sharing, uh, closed caption recording of this hearing on our YouTube channel, uh, in a couple days. And with that, again, yeah, have a great rest of your night. Thank you.